All right. Okay. Good afternoon. And our first item on the agenda this afternoon is just the Cherrydale Annexation overview and update. This item is before you this evening for the regular on the regular meeting agenda for first reading. And so this is an overview. Before we go into the regular meeting tonight, Austin's going to present the zoning portion. Then we're going to also have Chief Horton present some questions that came through from a couple of you related to service. And then we also have a financial update about it from Patricia at the end. So with that, I'm going to turn it over and let Austin go ahead and get us started.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Council. If you have me up here. This is AX one dash twenty twenty four, which is the proposed seventy five percent method annexation for Cherrydale area commercial and industrial properties. In early twenty twenty one, City Council determined annexations be a council priority. Since this council has held final reading for fifty fifty nine annexations consisting of just over four hundred and sixty seven acres of property, Cherrydale area annexation, which has long been an objective by the city leadership, the next step to help council achieve was priority. Over roughly the past eighteen months, planning staff has worked with thirty five individual property owners and representatives supporting forty petition of brand nation three's ninety six point one two two acres of real property. Starting in October twenty twenty two, staff began outreach to the property owners within the proposed annexation boundary. Between that October and June fifth twenty twenty three, when the petition was initiated, all thirty five property owners or their representatives were contacted. Through the means of hundreds of emails, phone calls, and meetings, both virtual and in person, staff provided the owners, staff provided the property owners all annexation related information, addressed any concerns, and answered any questions. This communication with property owners continues today through updates on administrative approval process and by providing them and their tenants the information to make the transition from unincorporated county to the city as seamless as possible. Through these staff efforts, the seventy five percent annexation method petition has exceeded all state statute requirements, with signatures gained from eighty three percent of the property owners owning ninety three percent of the assessed value. On February twelfth, council held the required thirty day notice public hearing, thus meeting all requirements that must be held prior to the first reading of the ordinance. This is the official annexation map showing the proposed annexation of the forty two parcels containing ninety six point one two two acres of real property and the adjacent thirty acres of Riteville. Those annexation includes the first lobby lobby Ingles and Aldi to be within the city limits. Other department stores including Ross, Navy Burlington, Petco, among others. In addition, restaurants including Chick-fil-A, Atlanta Bread Company, that breed a mix that they're all garden, among others. Service businesses include four banks, first class fault, AutoZone, and Hurricane Car Wash, among others. Industrial businesses include the Hankel and Chase Corporation site, thus increasing the city's economic development potential. And last, the welcome to Gringle sign in front of Cherrydale coin will welcome you to the city park.
Does this include a theater?
It does not include a theater.
So did they opt out of that or were they?
When communicating with property owners, we of course investigate properties. In doing so, we found that twenty twenty three was not the right time to approach those property owners as Regal was going through bankruptcy. Its parent company out of the United Kingdom was going through their form of bankruptcy, and the landlord which owns the property was renegotiating with Regal at the time. A lot has been said about fire service for this annexation, a protection by the city's fire department that is one of the components of the city's services and benefits package. We can look at properties in the area will be provided, may be provided assistance through our economic development corporations. This includes assistance to mass retailers with empty stores or the facade improvement program to facilitate exterior and site rehabilitation. The annexation will also benefit from our public works department through street cleaning and litter control. The city's planning and permit services will be provided to the site, providing for first class development services and potential for long range climbing studies in the area. Through annexation, the city may invest with capital improvement projects, giving traffic safety, traffic management, and besting safety improvements. Annexation will also allow the property owners to have greater political representation. If annexed, the property owners will have representation by mayor and three members of city council, thus being four members of seven. As has been noted, the city council or the Gringle city fire department station number seven would be the primary
Our first item on the agenda this afternoon is just the Cherrydale Annexation Overview and Update. This item is before you this evening for the regular, on the regular meeting agenda for first reading. And so this is an overview. Before we go into the regular meeting tonight, Austin's going to present the zoning portion. Then we're going to also have Chief Horton present some questions that came through from a couple of you related to service. And then we also have a financial update about it from Patricia at the end. So with that, I'm going to turn it over and let Austin go ahead and get us started.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Do you have me up here? This is AX one dash twenty twenty four, which is the proposed seventy five percent method annexation for Cherrydale area commercial and industrial properties. In early twenty twenty one, City Council determined annexations be a council priority. Since this council has held final reading for fifty, fifty nine annexations consisting of just over four hundred and sixty seven acres of property. Cherrydale area annexation, which has long been an objective by the city leadership. The next step to help council achieve was priority. Over roughly the past eighteen months, planning staff has worked with thirty five individual property owners and representatives supporting forty petition of brand nation three's ninety six point one two two acres of real property. Starting in October twenty twenty two, staff began outreach to the property owners within the proposed annexation boundary. Between that October and June fifth twenty twenty three, when the petition was initiated, all thirty five property owners or their representatives were contacted. Through the means of hundreds of emails, phone calls, and meetings, both virtual and in person, staff provided the owners. Staff provided the property owners all annexation or related information, addressed any concerns, and answered any questions. This communication with property owners continues today through updates on administrative approval process and by providing them and their tenants. The information will make the transition from unincorporated county to the city as seamless as possible. Through these staff efforts, the seventy five percent annexation method petition has exceeded all state statute requirements. The signatures gained from eighty three percent of the property owners owning ninety three percent of the assessed value. On February twelfth, council held the required thirty day notice public hearing, thus meeting all requirements that must be held prior to the first reading of the ordinance. This is the official annexation map showing the proposed annexation of the forty two parcels containing ninety six point one two two acres of real property and the adjacent thirty acres of right. Those annexation includes the first lobby lobby Ingalls and Aldi to be within the city limits. Other department stores including Ross, Navy Burlington, Petco, among others. In addition, restaurants including restaurants included Chick-fil-A, Atlanta Bread Company, that breed a mix that there, Olive Garden, among others. Service businesses include four banks, First Class Fault, AutoZone, and Hurricane Car Wash, among others. Industrial businesses include the Hankel and Chase Corporation site, thus increasing the city's economic development potential. And last, the welcome to Greenville sign in front of Cherrydale Point will welcome you to the city park.
Does this include a theater?
It does not include.
So did they opt out of that or were they?
When communicating with property owners, we of course investigate properties. In doing so, we found that twenty twenty three was not the right time to approach those property owners as Regal was going through bankruptcy. Its parent company out of the United Kingdom was going through their form of bankruptcy. And the landlord, which owns the property, was renegotiating with Regal at the time. A lot has been said about fire service for this annexation, a protection by the city's fire department that is one of the components of the city's services and benefits package. We can look at properties in the area will be provided, may be provided assistance through our economic development corporations. This includes assistance to as retailers with empty stores or the facade improvement program to facilitate exterior and site rehabilitation. The annexation will also benefit from, benefit from our public works department through street cleaning and litter control. The city's planning and permit services will be provided to the site, providing for first class development services and potential for long range climbing studies in the area. Through annexation, the city may invest with capital improvement projects, giving traffic safety, traffic management, and besting safety improvements. Annexation will also allow the property owners to have greater political representation. If annexed, the property owners will have representation by mayor and three members of city council, thus being four members of seven. As has been noted, the city count, or see the Greenville City Fire Department Station number seven would be the primary station for fire services in the annexed area. Fire Station number seven was specifically built at its location on the northern edge of the city in the early two thousands for the eventual annexation of the Cherrydale area. Lastly, the proposed annexation area will be provided police coverage by the city. The area will be provided, assuming will benefit from the city's response to increased patrol rates and other crime prevention methods. In discussions, staff has been told by many landowners that the main reason the annex was for least coverage. This includes the representative of the largest landowner in the proposed annexed area. And on February twelve, you also heard from a property owner the need for the city's police coverage in the area. In summary, the city's package provides services and benefits to the properties either not currently provided to the area or that will be improved from the services currently provided. Some have said, why is the city conducting so many annexations or why is the city aggressive with annexation? Well, since January first twenty twenty, the city of Greenville has been the second slowest growing municipality in Greenville County. The city of Malden has grown at almost double the rate as Greenville. The cities of Greer and Fountain have grown nearly fourteen and sixteen percent respectively. In fact, if current growth rates remain, the cities of Greer and Greenville will be the same size by twenty thirty. The annexation proposes the zone designations of BH Business Heavy District, BG Business General District, and IG Industrial General District. In accordance with the Greenville Development Code and this slide's map, the zoning desert proposals follow the current built environment and existing uses as development account. Staff is recommending approval of the annexation and rezone to BG, BH, and IG districts. At its meeting held on February first, planning commission also recommended approval of the rezone as well. Before this presentation ends, planning staff would be remiss not to express our gratitude to those who assisted us to get to this point. As you know, any, any annexation that comes before you is a city team effort. As you may expect, this proposed annexation included even more team members than most annexations. Three team members, planning staff wishes to thank you for your assistance and your professionalism to help bring this item forward. Planning staff also wishes to thank thirty five property owners and the representatives that we have worked with over these many months. Thank you for your time, your patience, and your trust that you provide to the city and staff to bring the properties into many of our. Staff looks forward to working with you, businesses, and your tenants in your town. And I can take any questions.
Can you go back to the map, please? The map slide, the one where it shows what we're bringing in.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to see it. That's all. Thank you.
No, I was thinking the same. I don't, I don't think we have a larger map, do we? This is the one and only map ready for display today. I just maybe as a follow up item, notwithstanding the first reading tonight, I'd love to see in the broader context, especially on. Points at Highway, where and how, you know, this adjoins with city property.
Yes. And I will, I would also add, you know, my excitement here is anytime you talk to someone who's coming into town. From the north, whether it's Furman or north, when they come in, they always say, gosh, I wish you had a better entrance way into the city. I mean, you go, you go through points at highway and it frankly looks terrible. So I think this is an opportunity for us to, I would love to see, see the city even crawl down Points at Highway. With, with the goal in mind of finally updating that whole corridor so it looks like it should. Beautiful. But good work.
Thank you, Austin. Yes, ma'am.
What is, are we going to hear from other staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Oh, excuse me.
It's okay. I'm so proud of you.
Me not as a project.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, chief.
So from the fire department's standpoint, annexation, wanted to cover a couple of things, and some questions you may have also. As we look at the proposed annexation area, we think it's interesting to talk about how many calls that Parker had in that area last year we're talking about. So we looked at the data from twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three CAD data. And as you can see, two thousand twenty two was one hundred sixty five, twenty twenty three is one hundred eighty seven calls. That only made up a little over eight percent of their call volume for their station fifty three they talked about. That's only eight percent of their call volume for that area. So it's not a lot of calls in the areas talking about annexations are going on. So it's not a lot, and we get the overall picture of call volume, so. And that's just on the proposed areas. Some updated data we'll talk about real quick with our data. Sorry, from our twenty twenty three data is up. This is a new slide that we just put up, our predictions came out. And I'll talk about moderate risk. We identified all risk factors in the city. We don't look at one area, we look at multiple risks, whether it's high life, moderate, medium, low, we categorize everything, look out from, from MBAs to medical, everything. We look at us, we have to report to that. So what's interesting to tell you is that when we look at our benchmarks, we try to do from our dispatch, from the time the call comes to our nine one one dispatchers. The time we, they get the call to us, to the time that we're out of the station, everything we benchmark, okay, plus travel time. The one thing we don't control always is travel time because of traffic and locations. Think about the entire area. We don't look at one point, look at the entire area. So I'll tell you that lots been said about our response times and our standard. But again, we look at our benchmarks, which NFA benchmarks to strive towards that. But also want to understand that over fourteen thousand calls, this snapshot was for a total of thirty four instances. Okay, which is a moderate, meaning what we respond to, we're subject to fire. Not all of our data, this is one snapshot that we've used for what we consider a moderate, which would be the business in that area. That we respond to moderates to is only thirty four calls to respond to last year and at a fourteen thousand calls. Okay, for service.
Define NFP, chief.
NFA is National Fire Protection Association, and we look to try to meet those standards to meet benchmarks. That is the national basis, and we try to meet the standards that we strike.
Do we have those same numbers for. Medical emergencies?
Yes, when we break down our medical and MBAs run together, we break those down as far as statistics and data as well as.
Are our response times pretty much proportional?
We, again, proportional as far as out of station, our dispatch times, travel times, kind of that, that issue, where the calls are. So realize when we look at this data for the entire city, one of the things we talk about is retreat. We have areas in the city that are further out that we're talking about. So when we look at the entire city, those outliers that are further out could cause issues when we don't have a station within a four, four mile radius. So again, we don't look at just one area, so.
Well, let me ask, let me ask a little more pointed question. When we first, we had a public hearing, maybe even we'll be reporting, certainly the public hearing. One of the things that, that the Parker Fire District seemed to be saying was that we were going to have problems responding to medical emergencies within a sufficient time frame. Do you have any concern whatsoever as to our ability to be able to respond and treat and care for people who have medical emergencies? Within the Cherrydale area that we are annexing.
So I'm going to give you a quick answer, and I'm going to give you an explanation about that.
Okay, good.
The good answer is no, sir. Okay. We look at the entire area, and one of the things we'll talk about is we don't talk about stations, which Park Force talk about. We don't talk about one point being Cherrydale. What we talk about is an entire area that we protect all of our citizens. It's also not talked about the fact that we, that where our station seven on Rutherford Road is within a thousand, two thousand feet of Parker's area on Rutherford. Now, if you want to use their data that says their station's a mile closer, well, our station's a mile close to that entire area of Rutherford Road, and we don't, they don't ask to respond to it. So sir, I'd say the same thing, and we can respond to those areas. Why auto aid is so important? Auto aid, which Parker's chief said doesn't matter compared to the first station assignment, auto aid does matter. We use AVM, we send the closest truck, whether that truck's from station seven or station six or station two, or our auto aid partners. Because Wade Hampton is already a partner of us, they've agreed upon this and also talked about the end. Maria Fire District and Duncan Chapel at the next council meeting, you'll see auto aid agreements coming in front of you. As a council to vote on that auto aid agreement as we continue to expand auto aid, make sure that all citizens, not just city citizens, but also county citizens, get the closest and fastest resource available.
Thank you. Sorry for the long explanation.
No, no, I appreciate that.
Let's go to the next slide and then we'll come, let's get to a couple of slides and then we'll get to the questions.
So this may tell you a good example, that we talk about, we look at that four minute response times, and it's not the way a bird flies. It's based on road miles, how you can travel and get to that. Because again, it used to be years ago, we talked about drawing a big circle, put a pin in the middle, and wherever that circle falls, well, four miles is a lot bigger, we don't do that anymore. Which interesting, you can see the four mile coverage mark, this is the pinpoint at Rutherford Station. Everything you see in blue, which this corner here is, this is Pleasantburg, and this is Points at Highway. So everything you talk about in Cherrydale falls in that four minute response time, along with anything else you see on Rutherford Road, all the way down this area falls in our four minute response times. This slide also talks about our station locations, where our stations are at, compared to Parker stations. An interesting thing, if you see here, this kind of a lighter shading here, yellow is Parker. This kind of a green color is everywhere our four mile, our four mile drive, excuse me, our four minute drive time is. So when we talk about auto aid not being important, I'll contradict that because auto aid is really important. Because it's putting an effective response force on C as fast as possible for all citizens. And if you notice, all this area, you can see that we've offered auto aid in the past with Parker on three different occasions, their fire chief, and they refused it. We've offered it not just to our citizens, but their citizens as well.
Any other questions for the fire chief?
Yeah, I have a question. How was, and this may be for both of you guys, but, but how are we going to deal, I mean. Looking at that map, it appears to be a donut hole with that theater. How's that going to work as far as if something happens at that theater? I mean, is Parker still?
The theater comes down to the city, but we have reached out again, offering auto aid again with Parker. We're more than happy to come at any point. I will tell you that, I think last week or two weeks ago, Parker had a possible structure fire in Cherrydale area. And then while they were on that, they called mutually with us to a cardiac arrest call and for a police standby in the county. And we sent units to cover that as well for them while they were tied up. So we have no issue even that area of the theater, I mean, at this point, to go to it is auto aid, or if they caused help, we're happy to go to it. But Parker will be responsible at this time for that first sponsor.
Okay, so, so just to ask that question in a different way, do we feel confident that even with that donut hole, that, that cinema is not going to be. Wanting or for deficient in service in case something happens on that property?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
And, and it's like any other donut hole we have throughout the city, because we have them all over Haywood Road too. We have tons of donut holes all over and we, we, you know, we don't have those issues with, with any of our other donut holes.
And also, Wade Hampton, a lot of the donut holes we see off of that area, we have an auto aid with Wade Hampton. So we send the coast side brothers with Wade Hampton as well with actually with all our drivers we have.
Excellent.
Thank you, council.
May recall that our retreat, Brian Brown brought up Boulder Creek, Boulder Creek, the housing development just below the movie theater. And that, that really is something I think in the next phase, we should start looking at, because that's an opportunity for housing as well as annexation opportunity.
Absolutely.
And councilor Dow.
I have a few.
I'm sorry.
Get back up there. She's sitting down yet.
I thought I was done. See, I didn't look at my notes, now I pull them in.
All right, um, you go back to the slide, go back one slide, and one more. That one, okay. So is this, I'm trying to get it in a nutshell. We consider this a moderate risk, if we had a moderate risk fire at the Cherrydale area, we would predict a total response time. Total response time from the time the call is put in to the time first responder's on site. Or, but no, but total response time for first responder would be six minutes, twenty seconds. Is that what that's saying?
No, so this is for the entire.
We not spend all that time saying.
So to answer your question is that we model based on historical data.
Okay.
So we predicted, it's kind of hard to do because you got the guarantee that everything's there. So this is the entire stretch of our entire city.
Okay.
So what we consider moderate risk fires, at a fourteen thousand call, we consider a moderate risk fire was thirty four.
Okay.
In the entire city of our entire jurisdiction. But our, that was our time, no matter where it was in the city, for an effective response force. And remember for us, that's putting plenty personnel on scene. Okay, that's putting a, a, a total response force of personnel to dig, to deal with a situation like this. From the time we get the nine one one call to the last apparatus gets on scene.
Getting there, okay. So that shows what we, what, you know, what's going on now for that kind of fire. When we, now if you could go to the map that shows, go to the next slide. On this map, with your hand, wave again where Cherrydale is, where Pleasantburg and Rutherford, I mean, Pleasantburg and.
This is where they're coming.
Okay.
This is where the.
And the Parker Fire District is just over the line, so to speak. See, I wish I could superimpose their fire station that would respond now with our fire station that will be responding. It, it's not really relevant, right? You know, as the crow flies, it may be closer, to use your term. But in reality, based on our practice and response times and certification, we don't have doubt that our response total time will be an improvement for them. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, ma'am, because we have our own dispatchers also.
Right, okay, so there you go.
But you got to remember, from the time someone calls nine one one, when you're in the city limits, you're going to our state dispatcher.
Okay, that, that's where you, I'm getting to. Someone who calls for fire in the city or calling nine one one where fire is going to be dispatched, has a much more direct pipeline to your engine getting there on site than someone not in the city of Greenville. And that is because of our direct dispatch, is it not?
And our dispatch follows our police chief work together, but also with the dispatch director, and they're credited.
Right.
So the same thing that they're not out, like, we have to, to do that data, look at that, we have to report to that, well, why is this happening? So then again, Parker's relying on Greenville County EMS.
Which is not a direct line of communication to get them dispatched. So, so, you know, that, you can't just say we, we're, we're, we're closer in terms of geography.
Yes.
You're not so much closer when it comes down to making the phone calls and getting a dispatch and getting a response there.
But I also want to point to you, chief, one thing that, councilman, is that Parker, he's talking about this one station. Hey, what I would like for you to do is see where there are other stations located at, compared to where our city stations are located at compared to that area.
And the amount they had to cover.
Yes, I also want to talk point out the fact that Maria and Duncan Chapel are currently in auto aid with Parker to come into Cherrydale. Which you'll have the next council meetings, auto aid agreements for the city with Maria and Duncan Chapel. And also Wade Hampton is already, auto aid partners already told us to be happy to come as well.
But not Parker because they've chosen not to.
Correct.
But it, all right, so this auto aid business, is it a two way street? If they called us for assistance, we go. For example, if they call us from the movie theater.
Yes.
We're going to go.
Yes, ma'am.
But if we call them, they will not come.
We will under, we will under mutually, because we all have mutual agreements without the county, why we have mutually. But auto aid means when, when we dispatch our trucks, their dispatches come as well, their calls come with us.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
And I will tell you that we went to, I think, fifty three out of the city last year with Wade Hampton, we had to come in thirty nine with us, auto aid calls with us too.
Have we as staff taken any action in communication and meeting with Parker Fire District since the public hearing on this issue?
They have reached out and we, the mayor and I, meeting was on Wednesday.
Okay, okay, and we're on first reading tonight for this.
Commission members.
Okay, all right. But that means it's going to take place for four second reading.
Yes, ma'am.
Wednesday, okay, great.
Have, have we scanned prior to taking action on annexation, the criminal history, to the extent that there is any in this area? Just to have a full understanding of what history has shown and then therefore what we would be inheriting from a crime standpoint?
Yes, I think Chief Thompson is here, and I think that they've been looking at the calls for service in that area. Chief, are you able to speak to that?
What the amount of calls for service in that area?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking me?
To get a sense of what the GPD would inherit predictably based on history from this.
So we would inherit based on, for the past couple of years, fourteen hundred calls for service and a couple hundred traffic accidents.
Can you give some relativity there?
I mean. Yes, we're getting ready to get into that council, well, Councilmember Brayson, we're going to talk about the cost per officer, having to probably add several officers.
In this presentation?
Yes, sir. Anything else for the fire chief? Okay, Patricia.
Just a quick overview of the financial impact. You know, Austin talked about all the city benefits earlier today. The Cherrydale property owners are actually projected to have a sixty nine thousand dollar per year tax savings. Based on the difference between the city of Greenville's millage and Parker Fire millage.
That's a big deal.
That's part of the incentive.
I mean, right.
I think that that's a lot, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's okay. Continue on, Patricia.
Okay. Currently projecting property taxes around half a million of that apportion, depending on whether or not we are able to reach an agreement with Parker Fire District. Around two hundred and something would be given to them. And then we're projecting business license tax revenue at three hundred thousand. But I want you to realize on the business license tax, it's going to take a couple of years to get there because they'll go in with just the, the base minimum fees, so.
So this is not something that we're doing through the incentive that we had where we're putting people on. So this is not something that we're doing through the incentive that we had where we're putting people on on a business tax.
Instead of plan.
Yeah, well, we were suspending, suspending, suspending business taxes.
I don't think we have that in any of this.
Okay. Portion.
It's a mix on how the annexation was completed, right, or petitioned, yeah.
So someone who does smoke dope, okay, right.
Okay. And then this is what the cost of an additional officer is, all the way from, you know, the annual or recurring salary and benefits through the vehicle and and uniform information, so.
Councilwoman Brayson, to your question earlier, in order to service the number of traffic calls that we believe are annual for Cherrydale, we'll be asking for two additional police officers in the budget at a minimum just for traffic enforcement. There will be other officers that will be coming toward you probably in the budget, but I don't want to get into those numbers right now because we don't, I don't have that prepared at this time. But there will be at least two additional dedicated officers we'll be asking for relative to traffic enforcement, to your earlier question. To jump back one slide.
Yeah, please, that's the same thing. So we're going to get seven, roughly a million, and then we're going to expend an additional 330, at least.
At least.
Well, that's part of the one-time cost.
Part of the one-time cost, that's right.
We're going to get 800. Looks to me we're going to get 8550 and get 800, so a net of 250.
Possibly, but we don't know how many total officers that we're going to need because we haven't taken over that service area. There may be additional officers that will be required.
No, 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 we're getting 800.
Giving back 200, potentially, and that's on the lower end because that's based on an expired agreement with Parker, so we've yet to.
And you bet people can help me out with that one-time cost and how that's distributed over time, what that real cost would be.
So, what, 10?
See?
We're not getting kicked out, we're behind.
I mean, you can't just say, I mean, the thing with the officers is that they won't be, you know, while we have to add to, it's not like they'll just be dedicated to Cherrydale, they'll be, you know, have different services, you know, they'll serve you throughout. But we're going to need at least two additional traffic officers because of just the number of accidents at our annual Cherrydale. There may be additional officers forthcoming in the budget, but we're not there yet.
Okay.
You want to estimate a high-end sign of Cherrydale? You've got two on the board, but you're saying there may be additional?
Probably five to 10.
Wait, I thought the two was what Cherrydale triggered, but we may need more overall. He knows Cherrydale's going to drive two.
Yeah, you're not talking about 10.
No, no, I don't think so.
About 10 for the entire city, is my understanding of it.
It's going to be based on what we actually encounter once we.
I mean, I'm not comfortable answering completely until I go through the budget process and we understand exactly what we're taking on with everything related to Cherrydale. Once we provide service to that area, then we'll be able to better estimate that number.
Because that, those numbers, I mean, it's not like this, we've had some onesies, twosies, smallsies, but also some biggies in annexation over the last year, too, that's got to drive that.
That's right.
In other words, I got to believe the S has been going for a while over the past year. But two definitely driven by the traffic in this area.
We're fortunate, this is also one that produces a higher rate of property taxes and business licenses and hospitality. So it's.
Now, on the.
Worked very well here.
On the hospitality, because of South Carolina state law, we will have to give that to the county until they, until a new business opens up. Essentially, yeah, we have to rebate that hospitality tax.
For all existing businesses.
For all existing businesses, we only get the incremental growth of the hospitality tax, so.
All right, but would the movie theater count as that in a renegotiated?
I have not looked at the movie theater, so.
They don't serve prepared food.
Yeah.
So.
Popcorn, I don't know.
So, just so I understand this, so for all the businesses over there, if they generate hospitality tax money, then that money goes back to the county?
So the county has to be made whole essentially for anything that they have in receiving.
Whatever that amount.
Whatever that amount is. So if that restaurant has, you know, higher sales, you know, once they're annexed, we'll get that differential.
Okay.
But, yes, the county has made whole for whatever their revenue source was at the time that they were in the county.
So just to be clear, if we make investments in the area and those investments create more business opportunities for those businesses that we've taken in, we will get the difference.
Correct. That's a good way to look at it.
Cool.
All right, other questions? All right, thank y'all very much. We're moving on to the next item on our agenda. Vicky Cram. Wait, oh.
Been looking at you, trying to remember.
Vicky Cram is our federal legislative lobbyist and has worked with the city for how many years now, Vicky?
About 10.
10 years, and she used to come down annually and visit with us to give y'all an update every year before COVID. And post-COVID hasn't been able to, we haven't been making that, and this year we decided to reinstate that and have her come down and talk with y'all about just our federal legislative update and things that we can be doing at a federal level. So, Vicky, we're so glad you're here. Megan and I got a chance to visit with her in December for a day in DC when we went to go work on some grant applications there. So thank you very much for being here, and I'll turn it over to you to kind of go through our update for us.
I can say something in the front end, too. The firm of Square Pat Boggs, which is certainly one of DC's more permanent law firms, has been our counsel and advisors in DC for, gosh, 20-plus years. We had a very competitive process way back. We've had a great relationship over many, many years, Vicky and others. And you might tell them what other cities you represent, but it's always been important to us that they represent significant cities, but they don't represent a whole lot of cities. And so we're right, we're in some good company.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Shannon. Great mutual, see you today. It's wonderful to be in Greenville, what a beautiful city and what a beautiful day. I run our, at Square Patton Boggs, I run our state and local practice area. And so we represent, for example, the governor of Colorado. We represent the city of Portland, Oregon, Las Vegas, New Orleans, Detroit, Boise, Idaho. So a smattering of cities around the nation, a number of counties, but most of them actually in Florida. So we like to be able to use that as a way also, in addition to just the straight lobbying that we're going to talk about here, to be able to sort of cross-generate and ideas between different cities that are doing innovative things and trying to solve problems on the ground. So we're happy to work with you on any, if any of our cities have interest. We also work very closely with US Conference Mayors, the National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, APTA, the Public Transit Association. So, you know, when you come back to DC, I want to make sure that, you know, we set up some meetings for you and we can take advantage of having you there with your feet on the ground. So, this is our legislative outlook for the remainder of this Congress. And so just a quick little overview of Congress, because it's important to things getting done. The House is very evenly, almost evenly split, 219 to 213, after the flipping of a seat for Congressman George Santos's seat in New York. And there are three remaining vacancies. The three vacancies, the little gray dots you can see on the map there, are two are likely Republican seats, will continue to be Republican, and one is a likely Democratic seat that will likely remain Democratic. This very, very, very narrow margin is very difficult to govern. The Republicans in the House split into about five factions. So the new Speaker, Mike Johnson from Louisiana, from Shreveport, Louisiana, was elected recently to replace Kevin McCarthy. He's still pretty green and figuring his way out. And so it's been a challenge for him to be able to wield the majority that the Republicans have in the House. Next slide is the Senate, which is also very evenly divided. And, but the leadership in the Senate is really important to note. Between Senate Majority Leader Chuck Schumer from New York and Minority Leader Mitch McConnell, there are decades of leadership experience, 24 years as leader of their respective conferences. So while they're very different in their approach and their politics, they've routinely shown the ability to compromise and reach agreement on different kinds of legislation. And over the last couple of years, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the Inflation Reduction Act, the CHIPS Act for silicon chips, border supplemental legislation that they just most recently came up with. So they, they have been, it's a little easier to get things done in the Senate with a little bit of compromise. Next slide. So there, that's our, and everybody's been following the news, so I know that you're all up to date, speed on this. So this is an election year, and that, of course, makes a difference because they will try and leave relatively early to campaign. We don't anticipate a lot of significant action for the remainder of the 118th Congress, but there are some bills I want to talk about very briefly. First and foremost is the FY24 appropriations. We, the beginning of the federal fiscal year was October 1st. So we are now a number of months into the federal fiscal year. The appropriations bills have been, are operating, the federal government is operating now on what's called the continuing resolution that pays for the, continues the government funding at FY23 levels. And it was divided into two tranches. And so one continuing resolution will expire on March 1st. There are four bills in that first tranche, including transportation HUD, which is, you know, piece of legislation that's important to the city. And then the remaining eight bills all expire on March 8th. And as it stands, as of this morning, we are not sure quite how they're going to deal with it because they do not have the bills ready to pass, the first four. They may do another continuing resolution, or the parts of the federal government may shut down midnight on Friday. And then the remainder have another week until March 8th. So that's where we are. We think that they may be pulling together a short-term continuing resolution to fund the federal government until March 20th and give them a little time to come to an agreement on overall funding levels. And what's holding it up is not just the overall funding level, they've pretty much got the numbers done. There are a lot of policy writers in the bills that are controversial on a number of different topics, and that's what's holding them up right now. So the Federal Aviation Administration reauthorization also is expiring, that will be on March 8th. There is likely going to be an extension until May. That bill has passed the House, hasn't passed the Senate yet, and they're conferencing it right now. The farm bill expires on September 30th, that's important for things like supplemental nutrition for families. Then there's the bipartisan tax bill. This was, sort of came together from the Republican Chair in the House of the Ways and Means Committee and the Democratic Chair of the Finance Committee, Ron Wyden, in the Senate. And they came up with this bipartisan tax bill, which has a number of business provisions in it. But I think of interest to the city in particular, it increases the low-income housing tax credit. So it increases the credit from 9% to 12%. And there are also some bonding issues in it. And so this is, this is important legislation in terms of all our cities in the country. I mean, it's just, it's a national problem of affordability for housing. And the low-income housing tax credit is actually the way most new housing, most new affordable housing is built in this country. It's not, it's not grants from HUD, it's the low-income housing tax credit.
Just want to make a distinction between, because all these are saying they must be addressed. If they don't do any bipartisan tax bill, what happens?
It will just go away, yeah. And next year is when, which will of course be a new Congress, but next year is when the 2017 Trump tax package, that starts to expire. So there is some thought amongst some on the Hill that they want to wait until next year when they have this big sort of cliff, fiscal cliff. But the two chairmen got together and worked on this bill because there are some expiring provisions this year, and that was the incentive for that.
Okay.
Do we see, and you might not be able to answer this, but if that gets hung up, could that affect flow to SC Housing and SC Housing's ability to allocate an award to different projects that are in the queue?
Yes, because if the bill passes, they will have a higher.
Yeah, but if it stalls, doesn't pass, does the 9%, can they still allocate?
It stays, they can still.
And they can continue to operate.
It won't be like the first three where if we don't do it, then all of a sudden the bottom falls out.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Now, one thing I wonder is, is it, based on what it is, is there a reason that our SC Housing would hold up approval of projects waiting to hear about that? I'm thinking not, because the money's just passing.
Yeah, I think the money's just passing through. It will just expand their capacity.
Okay. So this bill has passed the House, and it's waiting to pass the Senate. And so there are a lot of conversations between the members of the House Ways and Means Committee and the Senate Finance Committee. And with this bill forward in the Senate. So this is a sort of TBD, we'll wait and see. And then there is the National Defense Authorization Act. This has been passed for 62 years, every year. So hopefully, we will not have an anomaly this year, and then we'll pass NDAA.
Okay, I got a question before you move on. On this continuing resolution, it's my understanding that they get to a point where they do a full-year's continuing resolution, it triggers sequestration, sequestration?
It triggers a 1% across-the-board cut April 30th.
Is that, is that one year, is it cumulative? Or is, do they actually have to say, okay, we're going to do a full, we're going to do a one-year extension from this day?
So it would be, the way it's triggered, and this was put into the debt ceiling limit legislation last summer, last May, was there would be a trigger that if no appropriations bills have been, full appropriations bills have been passed, then that triggers this 1% across-the-board cut on April 30th. So that means domestic programs, but also defense programs. So everybody's got a reason to potentially not want to have that cut unless you just want to cut the budget, you're fiscal conservator, if you want to cut the budget. But it's sort of taking a bit of a hatchet to the budget.
So just to be clear, if they do, say, a month continuing resolution, and then do another, say, two-month continuing resolution, and that extends beyond April, that deadline?
That triggers.
That triggers that, okay, all right, good job. Thanks.
So the White House is going to be taking a couple of actions over the coming weeks. One is that the State of the Union is March 7th, and so the President will be going to Congress. And then on March 11th, he will send up his proposed FY2025 federal budget to Congress. This is, the importance of that, apart from messaging, the President's always send up what they want, what they aspire to, and Congress is the one that makes the decisions, is that it's symbolic and it kicks off the FY25 appropriations process, even though we haven't finished the FY24 process. So let's talk a little bit about FY25. So this is, I'm going to give you a little earmarks 101, and I'll be very quick on it. But, so after the President's budget goes up, then the congressional appropriators start thinking about the 12 appropriations bills. They have to come, first of all, to a top-line number, and then they give each one of the 12 subcommittees a number chip. Senator Graham, we're flagging this because, of course, he serves on the appropriations committee, he's very senior on it. And those are the subcommittees that he serves on. And in the House, because of reforms when the Republicans came in, they've limited, and Democrats before them, they've limited how many requests each member of Congress can make. They can only make 15, but the Senate, a senator can make as many requests as they want. And generally, they get a little bit more money than House members do to play with. And the next slide. So this is, you know, in a perfect world, this is the way it works. Hearings, allocations, writing a bill, committee and floor consideration of all 12 bills, conference negotiations, and ideally done before the 1st of October. As we've seen from recent years, this is not actually the way it works. So next slide, please. So when they, Congress had earmarking for community projects for many, many years, and then there was a 10-year hiatus when they did not earmark. And so three years ago, they brought back the earmarking process, and they've changed it quite a bit. So they have some restrictions on it. So only appropriations requests are only limited to state and local governments and nonprofits. So a for-profit, a defense contractor can't get an earmark anymore. You have to demonstrate community support for each of the project requests. The requests are published on. um, the requests are published online, and members have to be transparent about any interests they may have in the project, uh, and submissions are capped for the House, at 15 now, and the Senate is not, is not capped, and then there are a couple of additional, when the, when the Republicans took over the House last year, they instituted a couple more reforms, so each project must be tied to a federal authorization law, um, no memorials, museums, or commemoratives are allowed to be, um, earmarked anymore, and then they also closed off a couple of accounts that were previously opened, um, in prior, so not every account can be earmarked, only certain ones, and they shut off a couple of accounts that had previously been appropriated.
Since it's a non-recurring appropriation, do they typically favor bricks and mortar over operations?
It depends on the account, um, but typically, it, it is more, um, not operations so much, more driven by construction, bricks and mortar, yeah, um, so you have to have compelling, measurable outcomes, you have to identify what's unique about your project, um, specifically to the congressional district or the state, and then jogs, outcomes, et cetera, and then you also need to have, um, letters of support from elected community letters, that, community members, leaders, um, for something like a transportation project, it needs to be on the stip or the tip, the state transportation plan or the local transportation plan, so there are a couple of, of, um, sort of slots you have to fill, check into, um, and then, of course, you need letters of support from people, and that always takes the longest for some reason to get people to do a letter of support, so, those are sort of the parameters. And then you also need to have, um, breakdown of total project costs, and, um, generally, this is one-year funding, so if you, you're going to get one earmark for a specific thing, and you can't go back, it's very rare to go back the next year and get additional funding, and the amount may be less than you want, um, so projects have to be scalable and phased so the outcomes can be achieved, even if you don't get the full, if you ask for a million, you get 800,000, um, and there's no predictable timeline for project funding because of the appropriations process being so di, it's so difficult, and it's hard to predict when it's going to be completed, so, um, so it can take from 12 to 18 months from the date you submitted to Senator Graham, for example, uh, before you actually see the money, so you have to factor that into whatever you're asking for, and then these are some of the accounts, as I said, not every account, um, has been, uh, is earmarked, uh, these are the accounts that are sort of the most popular generally for local governments, um, and so you can see that there are things like, um, policing, police equipment, technology, uh, emergency operations centers, pre-disaster mitigation funding, um, Clean Water Act, Safe Drinking Water Act projects, uh, and then highway transit projects and airport projects, but even under airport, so, um, and then in the Senate side, the Senate does, as I mentioned earlier, earmarks some accounts that the House doesn't, and those tend to be in the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, um, some workforce earmarks, and then some energy projects, particularly, um, renewable and clean energy and resiliency, and I think that's sort of the last of that, questions?
Is this going to be in our packet for our, in teams?
Yes, in teams.
Might be, we're talking about what we've accomplished the last couple of years, put this in kind of reality check for this.
Well, we've worked a lot on the transit, on getting, uh, proterra buses and on the, um, transit maintenance facility that you and I have talked about a lot, um, we got $860 million, I believe, for the courthouse, which was very, very difficult to get, as some of you recall.
Federal courthouse, many trips out there, many trips down here, and then the maintenance facility, uh, that was, uh, we, we got a grant that exceeded what we never thought we'd get, so it was.
And multiple.
Yeah.
And multiple, yes.
So these, these have real tangible results for us when we focus on some.
Does, does the, I guess, Clint's here, too, the USDOT, um, I have no idea how the federal government works, do, are you able to capture money from USDOT through earmarks? Is that, is that a thing?
That is a thing.
Okay.
And it's one of the most heavily, the two most heavily earmarked accounts are the, uh, highway or transit portions of DOT, and then they take money off the top of CDBG, and so there are HUD earmarks that are anything that is CDBG-eligible, you can get an earmark for, so, yeah, other questions for Vicky?
Just so I'm clear, what, what makes something CDBG-eligible?
Well, you, you would have to ask your program, people who, who, um, run your CDBG program, if it's, I mean, if it's housing often, so, you know, you can do, have a couple of million dollars for an affordable housing project or a homelessness project or something like that, but if you're doing, getting a little bit around the margins, then you need to talk to your CDBG people in the city to make sure we can help, um, identify whether it's actually eligible.
No, we have a whole community development group, but it's, it's usually, you know, uh, like the special emphasis type, right?
I would also say, my view is probably all of it, but a tremendous amount of support has come through to the downtown airport, their runway repairs, runway expansion, EMAS, which is coming online this year, um, you know, projects that would not be able to be done and sustaining that airport without that funding, and I'm just going to guess the GSP has received. It's not looking that shiny and clean just on airplane taxis, so, I mean, we, we're sure that's right. We've been the receiver, I'm glad to be, yeah.
I've had our, this is earmarks, but what about, uh, in terms of our activity with the administration and grant opportunities?
So we, um, and some of you, I'm sure, around this table have seen this, we do a weekly update of all the grants that are coming out of the infrastructure investment, bipartisan infrastructure law, we do a separate weekly update of all the grant programs that are coming out of the Inflation Reduction Act, so those are all climate change programs, we also, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, send other grant opportunities that are out there to, goes to Shannon and Megan, and gets dispersed around the city so that you can sort of look for opportunities, um, you know, it's great if you come back to DC, um, when you do, we, we love having you there, but also it's really helpful to go visit the federal agencies in advance of a grant request, you can't, once, once you put a request in, they don't want to talk to you about it, so, yeah, um, but in advance so that you can put this grant in the context of everything else that's going in, because they just look at the grant when they get it, but if you're there as a political in particular, um, or, or a staff person, and you can put it in the context of everything that's happening in Greenville and how it's all synergistic, um, that's very helpful for them to sort of figure out how, how, what to fund and what not to fund.
They've been particularly successful over the years with EDA grants.
Yes.
Anything to say about that, in terms of where they are, and I don't think we have anything pending at the moment.
I don't think we have anything pending, no.
Very successful over and over again, EDA grants.
The public works grants typically, economic developments, assistance grants from the Department of Commerce, um, a very, that is a very diversified, um, agency, so, uh, going to DC and headquarters is not actually as helpful with them as it is working with regional offices, because they sort of count on the regional offices more than headquarters for that, but we've been very successful with EDA.
Yeah, I just think we'll be looking at that again.
And that's what I was wondering, too, is, you know, we all know our local folks, right?
Yeah.
And all the congressional offices and senate offices, is it advantageous if we have relationships with the actual member to go with you and talk, and our team and talk about, is that, is that?
And it's important to talk to their DC staff as well, because they're not all, they're not, I mean, they can call the, you know, the local staff, but it's just good to have a presence with them, and the staff turns over often, frequently, um, so it's just good to have that continuous presence.
We used to go every year, yeah, make our rounds.
We made our rounds in December.
You did.
We did, yeah.
Great job.
We just, we, we went to 101.
Yeah, is there a better time, if you're looking at, let's say, earmark appropriations, is there a better time, what's the good timing to show your face up there?
Yeah, um, so this is, this always gets tricky, because typically, the beginning of the year is the best time, but it's also when everybody is there.
Okay.
And it's hard, if you're there going to National League of Cities meeting, say, in March, um, you know, every other city.
So do it previously in preparation for the upcoming year?
Yeah.
Okay, when they're not getting bombarded?
When they're not being bombarded too much, yeah.
Okay, and when again is the best time for that, like, month wise?
So, uh, you know, I think the spring is good, but maybe not right at the beginning of the spring, because that's pretty crazy, because that's when you have all the, all the big conference mayors is January, NACO was last week, um, NLC is next week, so, you know, you, you want to need to, and we work with you that, what weeks they're in session, what other conferences are going on, so we can try to get a little bit more attention.
That's why I went in December.
Yeah, that's why you went in December.
That's what I was getting at, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And one other thing on the grants, because I know that we've, we've listed a couple of grants lately, um, very important to make sure that you do the debrief, especially with transportation grants, because DOT will tell you exactly where you went wrong, and where you're weak, and what you need to improve, and et cetera, um, and I think the debriefs are very helpful as well, so, to refine, and, and, you know, we've got a couple more years of this big infrastructure bill, so we just keep taking bites at the apple, having gone through the debrief process and knowing how we can strengthen our application.
Very cool, yeah.
Other questions for Vicky?
Thank you.
Thank you, well, thank you, it's good to see you all.
Thank you, Vicky.
We'll see you in DC.
Yes, see you in DC.
And, uh, the Chambers flying trip is scheduled in September for anyone who's planning to go to that, so, be able to see Vicky again in September, so, all right, very good, well, Mr. Mayor, I think we're ready to move into executive session.
Already?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks.
Adam and Trish, your attorney?
Right.
Yeah, for us.
Your, your agenda for the afternoon, I love. I have several items to address in executive session, all items, um, are either under Subsection 8, 1, 2, or 5, prospective contract regarding the use and control of Peace Center campus, prospective proposed contracts, um, regarding the foundation, receipt of legal advice regarding the city facility naming policy, post-purchase property on West Washington Street, excuse me, um, matters related to economic development and a project to be located at Icar under Subsection 85, and then time admitting, prospective contract regarding meeting facility downtown under Subsection 82, awards and conditions under your law.
So moved, back in, members are on?
Aye.